This is February 22nd and I will call this Lansing City Council regular meeting to order and ask that the clerk please call a roll.
Councilmember Betts. This member Betts is absent. The councilmember Dunbar.
Councilmember Dunbar was here for Kyle. I'm not sure where she is.
Is, okay. Councilmember Garza.
I'm here participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
You, councilmember Hussein.
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Okay, councilmember Jackson.
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Spatterford.
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Spitzley.
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Wood.
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
And has councilmember Dunbar joined us?
She's in the wait, in the attendees list, so she'll be on her way over. So if you could just hold for a second, please. Mr. Clerk.
Councilmember Dunbar.
President participating remotely from South Lansing.
Okay, thank you. We have seven members present at Quorum. Councilmember Betts is absent.
Very good. We have up next is the meditation and pledge of allegiance. And ask councilmembers if there's anybody that they wish to keep in our thoughts as we meditate this evening, as we reflect this evening. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Unfortunately, Mr. D'Mani Doby passed away before the age of forty. He's a longtime Lansing resident. He's a family person that is, that only people say good things about. He has young kids and he's best known for probably being the best barber in Lansing. And he passed away and just keep in mind those who knew him, loved him and care about him.
Thank you, Mr. Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, President Spatterford. Unfortunately, we've marked a milestone in our country and we have lost over 500,000 people to COVID. If we could remember all the families, both locally and throughout the country that are grieving, we are, have marked in February the anniversary of one year of being affected by COVID and we will be approaching the year mark here in Michigan as to when our state closed down because of that. So if we could remember people in our prayers and thoughts at this time, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood, for that. That is also, if you'd all please join me in a moment of meditation, I appreciate it. Thank you. Now join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
You have your approval, the printed council proceedings of January 25th, February 8th and February 10th.
You were busy. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Vice President.
Sure, I would move the printed council proceedings as presented.
And the motion before us, is there any discussion on the proceedings? Seeing none, would the clerk please call a roll?
Okay, councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatterford.
Yes.
Seven years, there are names. That motion is adopted and we are to comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
Any comments from councilmembers this evening? All right, I have one that I'm going to make. I, I had an opportunity to kind of review some of the things that we've been doing and we, oh, sorry, Mr. Vice President, go ahead.
Sorry, I had to find, had to find the raise hand feature. It's not where it usually is. In any event, I wanted to just very quickly, if folks remember back in December of 2019, believe it or not, we actually had council approve the South Martin through the King Corridor Improvement Authority. And so we worked with the administration, worked with LEAP through the better part of 2020 to populate that authority. And we were able to get a board in place and we actually had the authority's first meeting, I think it was December of this past year, 2020. In any event, I did want to, and as a matter of fact, we're going to take a look at the bylaws and consider approval of those bylaws, I think, as part of tonight's meeting. But in any event, I did want to congratulate a few folks that are part of that authority. Mr. Price Dobernick was actually elected as the new chair of the authority. Aini Abukar, who is now the vice chair, as well as Alexis Carnegie Dunham, who is now the secretary of the authority. And then I also wanted to congratulate Jeffrey Johnson, who was voted in as the treasurer. That being said, the next authority meeting will be held this Thursday at 1:00 PM via Zoom. So if folks are interested in attending, I think this, I think this authority, you know, and obviously we have to move forward and we have to look at development plans and TIF plans and things like that. But I think the authority is going to do some incredible work to really supporting some of the good things that are happening on that corridor and really advancing that corridor well into the future. But in any event, we want folks to get involved. And so there's that authority meeting this Thursday at 1:00 PM. You can take a look on the city's website. It's actually the Agenda Center, you can pull that up. But if you're having troubles accessing the, because this will be held via Zoom, if you're having troubles accessing the Meet link, you certainly can, or the Zoom link, sorry, you certainly can reach out to Hannah Bryant with the Lansing Economic Area Partnership. And I just want to take one second to thank her for all her incredible work. She's been tremendous as we, you know, kind of worked to get this initiative off the ground. But you can reach out to her at Hannah, which is H-A-N-N-A-H@purelansing.com. She certainly can send you the meeting agenda as well as the meeting links. That being said, that's kind of the good news with regard to South MLK and then a little bit of bad news. We've been getting a lot of complaints regarding snow removal. And so we have a number of people that are pedestrians or using mobility devices that are really struggling to traverse the sidewalks along that corridor. And that's, you know, that's not to speak of, you know, the myriad corridors across the city and other commercial districts where folks are struggling as well. But that being said, I really was hoping that Mayor Short could speak a little bit tonight about, and I know there was a moratorium on the snow ordinance that was put in place last week due to some pretty frigid temperatures. But what are we doing? What are we doing to educate? What are we doing to enforce? We certainly don't want to be hitting, as an example, commercial property owners that are reeling from COVID-19. But how are we actually getting out there into the field and ensuring that the sidewalks are clear so, so that, you know, folks can traverse them? So again, I'm hoping that Mayor Short can speak to that during his mayoral comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Short. There, sorry, you're in a different spot on my screen.
You want me to address that now?
Oh, you know what? Yeah. Can you wait? I'm sorry. Let's wait till mayor comments. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Trying to, I'm getting messages about the audio. I think TLC's Waterfall is playing. Okay, it's fixed. Um, that's a true story, folks. So councilmember Jackson, you had your hand up for comments.
Yes, thank you. Two things. First, just want to remind people that if they would like to subscribe to the Fourth Order, it is a newsletter that I put out about city-related city council matters. Please email me at bryant.jackson@lansingmi.gov and I'll put you on the list. And secondly, I wasn't gonna, I didn't know what I was gonna say, but I, I do know that there is a lot of people on today that's gonna come out and support Anthony Hulan and justice and get answers for him. I just want to let people know that as a person who, a city councilperson who receives briefings, legal briefings about what's going on in the case and things that we have ethical obligations not to talk about, I just want to let you all know that we all hear you on council, that we see you, we hear you, and we are following very closely and that we hope that you all get answers and that justice is served, however that may be. So I just know that a lot of people are on and I've been pretty quiet. I know that there's a lot of talk about why if anybody don't speak up, why don't we say things, what's going on? But the truth is that there are things going on, including legal cases that ultimately take precedent as far as what people can and cannot say about it. But I hope that justice is served and, you know, never give up getting the answers that you're looking for.
Thank you. And then I had one announcement that I'd like to make in reviewing some things with our internal auditor. I have decided to create an ad hoc committee on audit and that will be a three-member committee composed of the president, the chair of Ways and Means and another council member. And the job of that committee will be to form an annual audit plan and review those audits quarterly and then present them to council. Not that the internal auditor will only do that, but this is upon recommendations of the internal auditor. And then the hope would be to have recommendations at the end of that process to either solidify this in ordinance or the charter as part of the internal auditor's duties. But I didn't want to go that far yet because we want to see what works and what doesn't in terms of a process. So I'll have something a bit more formal to read into the record in a couple of weeks, but I wanted to let you all know that work was going to go ahead. Because I didn't have that quite inked before we announced committee. So I want to give you that heads up. And that's it for me, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, President Spatterford. I want to take a moment and announce that for South Lansing residents, there will be a May election on May 4th. The Waverly Community Schools and Holt Public School Districts have both called special elections for May 4th. So that impacts about 600 City of Lansing voters. Because of the continued COVID pandemic, we will be mailing absentee ballot applications to every active registered voter who lives in those school districts. But again, that's a very small portion of the City of Lansing residents who are impacted by that. And with that, we are to community event announcements. If anyone in the audience attendees has a community event, we will give you up to one minute to announce a community event. And just go ahead and raise your hand using the standard Zoom function, star nine on the phone, raise hand icon or Y or option Y, depending on if you're on a Windows or Apple. And I see I have one hand up. And for some reason, it's not telling me who it is. But there we go. Michigan Poor People's Campaign, you have one minute to tell us the details of your event.
Hi, this is Tobias Webb coming with the Metro Lansing Poor People's Campaign. I know a lot of people are on here who care about Anthony Hulan and the fact that we have murderers working in the jail. And we have Evren on Friday, another car caravan picketing the city. You know, asking for justice for Anthony Hulan in that at least the officers who killed him and the sergeant who watched that happen be charged so they can no longer work in Lansing and endanger us. So that will be a one o'clock outside City Hall on Friday. Hope to see folk there.
Okay, thank you. And seeing no other hands, we'll go ahead and move on. And I will announce that if you wish to speak under public comment on legislative matters, you can begin raising your hand now and legislative matters includes just the items that the council will be acting on tonight, which includes the scheduled public hearing items listed on the consent agenda and resolutions for action tonight. So go ahead and raise your hand. You will have until the first speaker speaks, finishes speaking to get your hand raised. And then we will stop accepting additional hands. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to speak. And at this point, while folks are raising their hand, also, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mayor.
All right. First, before I forget, I want to answer Councilman Hussein's questions. Thank you, Councilman. It's my understanding that the Director Kilpatrick and the public service folks have received complaints from folks down on MLK in Southwest Lansing and he, he told me that we have had folks out there, just, you all know that the snow ordinance that was passed, I don't know, eight, nine years ago, maybe. You all know better than I. It requires that someone clear their, the sidewalk in front of their house to public right of way within 24 hours after the snow stops coming down. So last week, it stopped coming down, but it was, it was frigid. It was in the negatives. So we paused the, the ordinance for 24 hours. And then it was back in effect and then it actually snowed again. So that reset the time. But I do know that we had people out there responding to the complaints. I was told that we ended up clearing three properties in the area on our own. So when we do that, then people get charged if they haven't cleared it. We had an inspector there for a few hours today. And I guess the inspector went in and actually talked to some of the businesses to remind them that they have to clear. So that way you're not just going after businesses, you're reminding them, don't forget to clear. And then there'll be rein inspections. Certainly the, the snow has to be cleared. So I know that that's been going on. Director Kilpatrick is on the, on the Zoom and I'm happy to have him answer any, any specific questions or anything else. We'll continue to, to navigate this. Again, we, we got a letter in my office, I think, last week complaining about it. And the answer is if, if someone's not clearing the snow, report it on Lansing Connect, you know, call our office, call your councilperson, call whoever you're, you're comfortable calling and we'll get it to public service and they'll send someone out there to inspect. And if it's been more than 24 hours, they'll issue a warning and then if it's not cleared, we'll clear it and we'll, we will cite the person for, for clearing it. Certainly, we don't want to do that, but we also don't want people walking in the streets. And I believe there was a young lady that was killed several years ago on Waverly when she walked in the street going to school. And we certainly don't want to see that. So everyone's got to be a good partner. I know that, I believe the Disability Network and RSVP, Councilwoman Wood would know better. I believe they still have the, they were called Snow Angels. Maybe they're called Snow Sergeants or something that can help out. And I've seen a lot of neighbors helping neighbors. So so yes, that's, that's kind of what's going on in, on MLK and throughout the city to make sure that that's been been taken care of. While we're on to snow plowing, I do want to, to thank our, our public service staff. I'm sorry, Councilman Spitzley, you, you want to jump in?
And I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to just ask a quick question about the snow because one of the things that I'm also hearing and maybe at some point we can have Director Kilpatrick come in, but probably by the time that happens, the snow will be gone. But just to kind of re-educate on the snow policy, I got a lot of emails about, you know, the side roads and, and streets that haven't been plowed and have been plowed. But on the south side here, you know, along Martin Luther King in particular, what I hear a lot from businesses is that they go out, they, you know, they, they do the sidewalks and then the plows come back through and cover up the sidewalks again. And so I, I don't know the answer to that, but I've had a, a number of them email me, one gentleman in particular, who's right next door to the old pro ball who, you know, hand shovels his walk and because there's such a small right of way area, soon as the snow plows go through, it covers the walk back again. And so you know, I don't know how to resolve that, but you know, it, it would be nice if maybe we could have Director Kilpatrick just kind of give an overview of, you know, the streets. And I love the snowplow map.
Yeah, yeah, I was going to bring that up. That's our, that's our solution. It's a, you're right. I, I hear that a lot. I hear either A, the plow didn't come through or B, it came through and it plowed me back in. And, and my favorite story is about two years ago, I heard both things on the same street from two different people, that the plow didn't come through and then it did come through. So we, for those who are watching, we have a new real-time snowplow map. It'll tell you within the last 15 minutes where the plow is, if it's come through, if it is about to. It's got all of that in the map is, it's lansingmi.gov/snoemap. So if you click there, if you're, if it just snowed, you're about to go outside and shovel, but you don't want to have to shovel twice, check the map and wait and see until the, the plow has come through and then go shovel. That way you don't have to do it twice. We've had a lot of kudos about that. We just rolled it out. And again, I'll thank Andy Kilpatrick and our public service staff. They did a great job with that. I'll also point out, Councilwoman Spitzley, it's a, it's a good point. We got some complaints. I know we heard some complaints about only one side of the street being plowed in a few areas. And some of that is due to, you know, folks parking on the street overnight. And, you know, we knew that was going to be a condition. We knew that, that, that we would have to remind people, if you park on the street overnight, there's a snow emergency, you still got to get your car off the street. And it's not just 2:00 AM to 5:00 AM. If there's a snow emergency, you got to get your car off the street. When we, when we announced in essence, snow emergencies and we're working on a, we're systems trying to make those even better. People got to get their cars off the street. But if they don't, then the plow only comes through one side. So we're navigating that. And again, I've heard that in a few different places. I heard it in, in Morse Park. I heard it up in Grostbeck. So, so we may have to send the plows back through in some areas when the cars have been moved or we may have to ticket cars that, that are still there in snow emergencies. So that's all, that's all true. And I'll, we'll talk to Director Kilpatrick and have him come and refresh council on the policy. And, and we do put that information out through our neighborhoods. Delisa Fontaine and our neighborhoods folks put that out on email. So we have something like seven, eight hundred people on email that we put that out to, to make sure that folks know. We do our best to get it out and we'll continue to do that. I do want to compliment our, our folks for their, their, for snowplow. We did two, since the last council meeting, we did full, two full street plows and they did a great job. But if, you know, if anybody still doesn't have their street plowed and the map says that it was, then please call our office. Outside of snow, I want to, to thank all of our folks that did a great job as part of the Mayor's Racial Justice and Equity Alliance. They gave a great update last week. Teresa Bingman and, and the, the work group members. We have something like eight or nine work groups. Dr. Elaine Laws Barker and Carl Dersheimer talked about economic development. Dr. Delsa Chapman and Carmen Turner talked about education. Chief Green, Pamela Davies and the Reverend Dr. Melvin Jones talked about public safety. Guadalupe Ayala, Kim Coleman and Linda Sanchez Gazzella talked about training. Paula Cunningham and Willie Walker talked about the history of Lansing. It was a great update. We have other committees that are also working, Arts and Culture, Communities and Neighborhoods, Health and Environmental Justice, Housing and Development, Mission Values and Commitments. And we're looking forward to the final report on that. In terms of some cool events coming up, we have this free snow tubing event for Lansing residents at Hawk Island Park, which is February 24th from 11:00 AM to 5:45 PM. Please pre-register. There will be no same-day onsite registration. Please pre-register. Go to our, our neighborhood's website to open to all City of Lansing residents. Also, Serve Lansing will have their annual Baker Neighborhood Spring Cleanup at the end of March. I want to say it's 27th. It's going to focus on drains and street gutters. And our neighborhood folks are willing to do that anywhere, if there are neighbors and neighborhoods that want to do that. And then finally, I want to remind everybody who's watching that healthcare.gov is now open. The Biden-Harris administration opened a special time for Americans to sign up for health insurance. So from now until May 15th, anybody can use a special enrollment period to secure coverage as we work to combat the pandemic and strengthen the Affordable Care Act. So again, it's a special enrollment period. And folks are welcome to sign up at healthcare.gov. So that's what I've got. I know it was a little long, Mr. President, my apologies, but thank you for the time.
Of course. I think Councilmember Dunbar may have a question for you, so you're not off.
I'm not done yet.
Because many folks are interested in knowing this, I, I need to ask, why for the new commission on equity and diversity, why was a confidentiality agreement required as part of participation in that commission?
Sure. Teresa Bingman is running that. And in the original conversations, people wanted to be able to be free and clear and open with their opinions without being cited in the newspaper and in the news and to be able to have an open dialogue. And that's the exact reason that, that they decided to have a community update to discuss some of the things that are coming out there, that are coming out during the conversations that are more in concept rather than attributed to any one person. But she felt it was really important for these, these experts, both in the alliance and on the work groups to be able to have an open dialogue and conversation without it being strictly documented. And that will all be shared. It was shared last Wednesday. It'll all be shared when the, as the report comes out and they've been, I think they've had eight, nine or 10 different open forums with different groups. So any group is, is welcome to have conversations with them, but Teresa thought that was important. She's the expert. And I support her on making sure that we're getting all the issues on the table so that we can, you know, they can provide the recommendations we need to see.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Dunbar. Mr. Clerk, I think we're ready to move on.
Okay, we are to public comment on legislative matters. That does include the following public hearing that I'll read into the record. And, and this is in addition to the consent agenda and resolutions for action. The public hearing is in consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter 608 to allow for consumption of alcoholic beverages on public property located in central districts.
Councilmember Dunbar, did you want to say anything about the public hearing or just leave it stand?
Yeah, I mean, basically, it's, it's, you might want to say it because it's your amendment, but it's to allow alcoholic beverages to be consumed on public property and in areas that are deemed necessary for exterior social distancing to support our restaurants and establishments in certain parts of the city. So, can I cover it?
Mostly, there's one other section that would allow for mirroring the county's policy on liquor license for temporary events in certain city facilities.
I thought I said that in the beginning with the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right, sorry.
But I didn't, yeah, it's yours. You, you say it how you like it.
Okay. Councilman Garza has a question.
Thank you, Council President. So would this be allowed for alcohol consumption in all of our city parks as well?
No, it would not. It would, it, like the county policy that we're, we looked at for inspiration would require if you rented a facility and wanted to purchase an additional license to go along with it for serving. So it's limited right now to certain facilities like Swak. Turner Dodge allows Potter Park to do it, but doesn't require it because Potter Park has a separate board. And then the parks in the city that have pavilions that you can rent. So you'd have to, the condition would be that you'd have to rent the facility. And then if you'd want that license, you could get it with it like you do at Hawk Hollow or other county parks. Hawk Island, excuse me.
All right. Thank you for the clarification. Appreciate it.
Yeah. So just if I could add that, that's be like weddings, family reunions, things like that. Special events that you would normally get a pavilion or a space in a park for.
Yeah, it wouldn't be an open intox carte blanche for city, city properties and parks. But the social districts piece is another piece that, that was, we talked about that last summer, would allow for social districts to be created. This ordinance does not actually create the social districts. It's kind of a complicated process as to how it works. But we have to authorize their creation and through the ordinance and then we can create them. And I've encouraged councilmembers to think about where in their words specifically makes sense to have some social districts. I know that DLI has already approached us about one downtown. I know that there are some interests on the east side as well. And that's, those are, those are the two that I've received feedback about. But then we'd have to authorize those and then they go through the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. And they can't just be anywhere. They have to be adjacent to two or more licensed properties. So you'd have to have two spaces where on-premise consumption is permissible to allow a social district to be created. So you couldn't just say, I want it in my driveway, right? That kind of thing. It'd have to be in spaces that, that meet certain criteria. Okay. Clerk.
Okay, so we are to the public comment portion. And again, we will allow you to raise your hand up until the first speaker finishes speaking. And we are on legislative matters only. The first speaker is Ash, followed by Mo Nelson.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm speaking in regard to the over $100,000 in grant funding for the Lansing Police Department likely be accepting today during this meeting. The budget for the department is already about 45 million. They do not need more money. This money should not be going to further policing and punitive measures against City of Lansing residents. You must earmark these funds to support the community, not police it. You must earmark these funds to support the community, not police it. For example, these funds could be used to create a deeply necessary new approach for so-called mental wellness checks. At the very least, this one hundred thousand dollars could be used to get the ball rolling on that. Including a punitive policing approach to these uh, checks is horrifyingly dangerous. Um, so according to Doris A Fuller and her research team at the Treatment Advocacy Center, people with mental illness are four and a half times more likely to be arrested than others and are sixteen times more likely to be killed by police. I and people I care about have mental illnesses. Many of them have been hospitalized voluntarily or involuntarily, including myself. I fear for our lives. I fear the ever looming danger of a trigger drunk police officer potentially ending our lives because they don't have the capacity to understand or properly handle our situations. So people's lives are on the line. You can't just keep talking about a different approach to mental health related calls, as I've heard some of you consider, which is great, but you need to act. This money could be used to do that. The forty-five million is already enough to take their punitive approach, and it should be less than that. Um, not only is it already more than enough, they they need to shift what they already have in existing funds to create community supports as well. You need to support the the resolution to defund the police, and that doesn't only mean taking money away from the punishment budget, which is what police budgets are. It also means using the money that would have gone to that after the fact punishment and shifting it to community-based prevention. So um, stop enabling the department's farther punitive expansion. A department which, by the way, could free up funds and essentially make money by firing the people on their staff who murder and brutalize and break the rules they're supposedly meant to follow. People like, I don't know, the people who murdered Anthony Hulan. So um, don't let this extra money be used to farther farther harm Lansing. If you can earmark it, please do. Um, that would be great. And one more thing, please don't try excusing Councilmember Betts again. Seriously, please. He's not here for a reason. So, thank you. That's, that's, that's all I have to say today for that.
Okay, thank you. Next, uh, and uh, that is so we are not accepting additional raised hands at this point. Um, and once again, as a reminder, we are on um, legislative matters. So next is, uh, and let, and that is items on the agenda that the council's acting on. Next, we have Mo Nelson, followed by Zach W.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hi, uh, my name is Maurice Nelson. I'm a longtime resident of the City of Lansing. Uh, and I also graduated, went to school here, uh, worked and um, did a lot of good things for the community here. And recently, um, I I saw that um, an opportunity for me to go into the uh, uh, marijuana industry through what's called the Social Equity Program. And so since about two thousand and thirteen.
Sir?
Yes.
That, that is not a thing that the council was acting on tonight. If that's what you wish to address, you need to speak at the uh, general public comment session.
That's what I was looking for. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I apologize.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. Uh, our next speaker is Zach W., followed by Kelsey Brean.
Hi, uh, this is Zach Quayleman, West Side and Fourth Ward. Um, I also like to speak on the um, proposal number nine for the grant grant acceptance of the Justice Assistant Grant, uh, which looks to be a little bit about a hundred and six um, thousand dollars. That's slated to be accepted tonight for Lansing Police Department. Um, I would assume that this is similar to the other grants that have been accepted where it's one of those um, annual federal grants we can more or less count on and probably spend the money before we even really have it. Um, so I understand that asking council outright to um, decline accepting it is probably a long shot, although I think that's probably the best for the community. Um, instead, I'd like to ask that we try to explore possibilities of allocating that. Um, if that's at all possible for council. Um, I've been emailing back and forth with Councilmember Jackson, um, having a dialogue about what we can, whether that's possible, if the council can accept the funds, but then stipulate us to the way that they're used. Um, the JAG grant stipulations say that they can be used for drug treatment and enforcement programs, crime victim and witness programs, mental health programs and related law enforcement programs, or law enforcement and correctional programs, behavioral programs and crisis intervention teams. Um, so just in a quick brainstorming that I did in the email, um, with Mr. Jackson, um, I think there are a lot of programs in the community and nonprofits that are offering um, substantive supportive measures for citizens that could fall under that. They already have a foothold in the community. I think this could be a um, a good starting point for some relationship building between the city and the nonprofits that are already providing really critical services. Um, some examples of um, really existing programs that could be funded with this money are needle exchange programs um, under the drug treatment. Um, restorative justice things, uh, restorative justice programs and training, health counseling for vic, uh, mental health counseling for victims and witnesses, and alternative response teams, um, as it lists specifically, uh, behavioral programs and crisis intervention teams. Are all things that I think if we were able to divert that money to um, third parties outside of the police, that could be seen as a a pretty large ol- olive branch um, between the uh, the city and these nonprofits that are trying to fill the gaps in the services that the city isn't providing. Um, and help towards actually supporting the community as opposed to just leveraging punitive measures against it. Thank you.
Um, thank you. Next is um, Kelsey Brean, followed by Laura Anderson.
Hi, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Kelsey Brean, and I am standing in solidarity with the Poor People's Campaign of Lansing. Um, specifically on the funding with uh, the police and that that grant that is being looked at. Um, it is really important that we do focus on um, mental health and uh, drug rehabilitation programs. And I believe that funding, if it is possible to be diverted toward that direction, is really important. I think the thing that we forget that is really important is that in twenty twenty and, or from twenty twenty in the season of our life, no one in the US is walking around without trauma. We all are living through trauma. And it's important that, you know, whether it's someone that's working in the police department who um, frankly, the person who, people who witnessed or murdered Anthony Hulan, that person is walking around with trauma and should not be allowed to be on the job. Now, people who are, you know, are trying their best and and doing whatever, like besides obviously that situation, deserve mental help, help. Um, I also want to speak on what Ash said earlier about the uh, importance of wellness checks and importance of those police officers who are responding to wellness checks. We don't know what kind of trauma they're dealing with, or what we can excuse or can't excuse. So it's important that, in general, that we are talking about mental health services at this time. Um, as well as harm reduction and um, you know, focusing on, like I said, that drug rehabilitation is important as well. Um, I also want to speak, if I'm able to, um, about the the snow clearing. Is that something I can speak on?
Uh, that's not a fraction, and so that would be a second fraction.
Yeah, no worries. I just wanted to um, but that is okay. Um, yeah, I guess I'm just inherently disappointed by the response that has come to Anthony, the district, Anthony Hulan in regarding to the police funding. I'm glad that someone actually mentioned his name today. Um, but I believe this police funding, we need to fire the people who are liability who murdered him, and that has to do with that funding. Um, and I I guess I um, I give, give up the rest of my time.
Thank you. Uh, next is Laura Anderson, followed by Farhan Sheikh Omar.
Good evening. My name's Laura E. Anderson. I'm a Lansing native, and I've lived here the majority of my life. Um, I am uh, reiterating um, what Ash and Zach and others have stated that uh, I would like to see the uh, Justice Assistant Assistance Grant Funds be uh, earmarked for uh, mental health or drug rehabilitation programs. Um, even most preferably with a third-party community group, as Zach was describing. Thank you.
Thank you. And it looks like Farhan has lowered his hand. So next we have Sam C., followed by the Poor People's Campaign.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, I just wanted to hop on, uh, again, uh, speaking as everyone else is on the issue of the uh, of of the option of, you know, accepting more money for for policing. Uh, and I think that there are things that interconnect here. Uh, a lot of the issues that we're talking about, about the roads in public comments, uh, they connect, they all connect back to this idea of justice. And you know, how do we use that money? Do we use it for mental health resources? Do we use it so that Mr. Shore can, you know, launch tear gas at me again? Or do we do something else with it, right? Uh, the City of Lansing, like, do we, do we need, do we need tear gas? Is there, wh- where do we as citizens find that contract, you know, with where this money is going to? Be it, again, tear gas, or be it mental health crises and counselors and, you know, intervention experts. Um, because uh, from from a criminological perspective, uh, right now, the City of Lansing is losing and hemorrhaging public trust because all of these actions are about punitive measures. Uh, firing Michael Lynn, uh, that was a punitive measure. It doesn't result in restitution, uh, rehabilitation, restoration, anything that is beneficial to Lansing, uh, in a broad sense or in a sense of longevity either, right? So if we took that money and we had things around public support, if we tried to actually end homelessness in Lansing and put the same amount of money into those programs and uh, you know, into into shelters and into uh, those those paper programs, uh, that that cyclically can can help with factors uh, around criminality, around, you know, like human human conditions, around just how, how well people in Lansing live or don't live. Uh, again, if we uh, try to push people out of cyclic recidivism uh, and criminality and use systems that give them educational resources, that give people that have had, you know, a hard time earlier in their life, uh, opportunities to, you know, get get useful skills uh, and not have to worry about homelessness or, you know, health uh, and 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 death. Those are all items uh, that that would be much better uses of the money. And so my question, uh, I guess publicly, uh, would be where that contract is or is not visible. Uh, how much of that funding is discretionary to you all as council? Or to uh, to the Chief of Police and the Chief Board of, uh, the Police Board of Commissioners? Uh, and how much of that is just uh, the people on this Zoom call not caring if that money goes to ending crime in Lansing, ending homelessness and things that affect residents poorly versus letting Mr. Shore send tear gas at me again? Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next, I believe is Tobias Webb, the Michigan Poor People's Campaign, followed by Danielle.
Yep, you got me, Chris. Um, talking about the same stuff as everybody else on behalf of the Poor People's Campaign. That JAG money, um, y'all know it can go to drug rehabilitation and mental health stuff. So if we see it going to the police, um, you know, that will be unacceptable. We're we're demanding that this money be put into programs that are run by the community for the community, and the police in Lansing are not an example of that. Um, that's all that we have to talk about that's actionable. So um, I'll see you at the second public comment.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Danielle, followed by Amanda Thomas Show.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I'm also speaking on the same topic that many others are speaking on and saying and pleading with you as our counsel to please put that money towards actually helping people. And putting it directly into the police's pocket is not how you do that. We need to set up better infrastructure to help people in Lansing, and that includes um, better shelters and, you know, right now, it's a crime to be homeless in Lansing, and I've seen how we deal with that. And the way we deal with that is to make it illegal to be living anywhere in Lansing. Working with the homeless people in uh, the back forty has made it very obvious that the police do not have our best interest at heart and that they only want to exert their power over us. And so I'm pleading with you, please do not give this money to them without the stipulation that it has to go towards mental health help and real mental health help that's not just if you're crazy, we'll shoot you, and that's our way of dealing with you. Please look at the research. Look at this, because there's so much information out there that has been to our benefit. We know that defunding the police works. We know that putting that money towards the community works. So please, like, like Zach said, like many others have said, work towards better mental health, work towards getting rid of substance abuse issues, work towards helping people rather than hurting them. Because helping always, always works out better in the long run and actually saves us money. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. And the final speaker that raised their hand before the cutoff was Amanda Thomas Show.
Hi, thanks so much for having me. Um, I, well, you have to. Um, but I, I just wanted to go ahead and second, third, fourth, um, the everybody that came before me. I, it's really important that if we are gonna take money for law enforcement, which um, I think Zach said it first, that we shouldn't do that at all. Um, but if we are, because apparently where we feel like we have to, we should definitely be putting that money towards um, actual services and not for just, you know, the horrible things that we've been doing as a city. Um, our law enforcement, the way that we've treated Lansing citizens' lives, um, like they're, you know, not really worth anything. I would rather we start helping people and put our money towards that. So, um, yeah, also, since I've got a second, I just got to say Brandon Betts has got to go. Um, Andy Shore, please resign, please. And um, we still need justice for Anthony Hulan. Okay, my time's over.
Thank you. And we are to the referral of the public hearing on uh, social districts.
Now, we'll go back to the C Committee on Operations.
City Services? Is that what it's called?
It's called Operation, City Operations.
City Operations, thank you. So, then we are to the.
Dunbar's gonna handle it. Go ahead.
Do you want me to, okay. So just to describe what's on the consent agenda, this is a confirmation of an.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, sorry.
What am I confused on?
That was my fault.
Your committee.
Yeah, we we were talking about your committee. We were, we were sending the uh, the public hearing back to your committee. Yeah, sorry, my bad. All right, uh, Mr. Clerk, go ahead.
Okay, we are to the consent agenda.
Mr. Vice President.
Sure. On the consent agenda tonight, we have a confirmation of appointment for Yvette Collins, the City of Lansing member of the Capital Regional Airport Authority Board. That's for a term to expire September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, we have an amendment to the two thousand and twenty-one committee assignments. Uh, we also have um, a resolution extending the declaration of state of emergency regarding COVID nineteen uh, through March twenty-second. Uh, that's also retroactive back to uh, February eighth. Uh, we also have a resolution, um, amending Resolution two thousand and twenty-one dash zero three zero. Uh, it pertains to a correction to the term of expiration for the appointment of Sam Brewster to the Lansing Police Commission uh, to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, that said, I move the consent agenda.
Is there anything people wish to remove from consent? Okay, Ms. Clerk, please color.
On the consent agenda, Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Seventy-eight, zero, and A's. The consent agenda is passed, and we are to resolutions for action. First item is a donation acceptance, Francine Die Living Trust.
Uh, Ms. uh, Councilmember Wood, Madam Chair.
Uh, thank you, President Spatafor. The first thing I'd like to do is to move the substitute, and then I'll speak to uh, the resolution. So at this time, I move the substitute.
All right, the substitute has been moved. Would you like to speak to the substitute? Or, let me, let me get in front of us.
On the substitute.
Yeah, substitute. Mr. Clerk, please color.
On uh, accepting a substitute for the resolution originally, uh, reported from committee, Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Seventy-eight, zero, and A's. The substitute is adopted.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, what we have before us is a donation from uh, the Francine Dyer, uh, who um, was a Lansing School uh, district teacher for over thirty years. She passed away on November twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen. Part of her trust, um, she um, donated money to the Lansing Police Department K-nine unit. The amount of um, the donation is nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. The amount of um the donation is nine thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-nine cents. Uh the K nine unit intends to use the donation. Um for a variety of things, anywhere from professional grooming basin to um agility. Um seesaws to tire jumps to a variety of things uh that they use as part of their training. Um and so this resolution is accepting um the grant or the um donation that we have before us.
Thank you for that explanation. Uh is there any further comments? Um Mr. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you. I just wanna put for the record that I am inclined to support receiving a donation that's in a woman's. Uh will who wanted to go here, here for the Lansing Police Department. I don't think there's any doubt that we will always probably have a K nine or a K nineteen. And it's important that even that police animal be trained, so it would. Very inclined to support receiving a donation.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. So um Councilmember Wood, have we approved grants from this living trust for other thing? Other than the K nine unit, I think, uh does she give, we we determine where money goes to, or how does that work? Cause I seem to recall that we approved um money from the living trust for something else.
Um the last one that we did was um for a retired Lansing police officer. Who um passed away and they had a golf outing, and those dollars came back. Um he, the family asked that those be donated back um to uh the Lansing Police Department. Um to my knowledge, this is the uh first that we have received um from this living trust. And whether we're uh from this trust, whether there will be additional dollars that will um accumulate. Um in the future, I'm not sure of, um but this is the first um donation that we have from this trust.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Um Councilmember Wood, would you like to move the substitute?
I I thought I'd get some, thank you.
Been moved. Any further discussion? Seeing on the.
So this is on the resolution as substitute.
Yes.
Um Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Seventy-eight, zero, and A's, the resolution is adopted, so we're to the Mishda Grant Acceptance.
Councilmember Wood.
All right, thank you. Uh the next uh resolution that we have in front of us. Has to do with uh the Michigan State Housing Development Authority Emergency Rental Assistance Grant. First, let me indicate that we are waiting on legislature legislation to be adopted. Um by the state before we would receive these dollars. It is similar to what happened uh when we approved accepting the grant. Um for COVID dollars that had not been um allocated yet from the state. But uh we wanted to make sure that we were in place and ready to go, and so this is what this grant is for. Uh what this would be is a grant for twenty-seven million um two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. This is for the Inham County area, seventy percent of these dollars would end up in um Inham County. Um the uh we would have until um. I believe it's September. Is that correct? I I believe that's correct.
Yeah, it it was September to get the the dollars expended and to utilities.
So what we're talking about is roughly three million dollars a month that we would have to be spending. Um these dollars would help with uh rental assistance. It would also help um with a number of the charities that were mentioned earlier. Um that deal with the homeless, um Advent Ministries, Holy Cross Services, Capital Area Housing Partners. Um there would be money that would also be um set aside to help with um utilities. Um and um there's ten percent of the dollars that would be. Um utilized for admin, not only through HRCS, but the other agencies that would be administering these dollars. Um also, um we are only um allowed. Uh we would get fifteen percent of the dollars um ahead of time, and then everything else. Um for this particular grant is a reimbursement. So um what is also being authorized is the fact that we would. Um borrow the dollars, and again, it's only after we would receive. But we would borrow roughly around um six million dollars to help um fund. Um the dollars so that we would have them on hand um as we were going through the reimbursement. Because again, we're talking about um three million dollars that we have to spend a month. So this is money that's got to go out there and be used in in the um public. And I'd be glad to answer any other questions um on this that anyone might have, and I would move the resolution.
Resolution's been moved. Is there any discussion? We did, we've received a lot of reports on or information on this in the Ways and Means Committee, and this is gonna be a really solid program if the legislature. Does its job, so um we'll just leave it at that and ask for the clerk to call the roll.
Yeah, on the resolution, Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Seventy-eight, zero, and A's, the resolution is adopted, and we are to the uh chat Justice Assistance Grant.
Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, President Spatafor, and before we start on this one, I would move the substitute, and then I'll introduce the substitute.
All right, substitute's been moved. Mr. Clerk, would you please call her on, adopting the substitute?
Adopting the substitute, Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yeah.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Seventy-eight, zero, and A's, the substitute is adopted.
Uh Councilmember Wood.
I will address this, but we also have um Chief Green, who's with us, that will be able to answer any questions. And I am not able to answer. Um these dollars are, as some people indicated um during public comment. Are allocated um through the justice grant, and it is a percentage that is given. Once the dollar amount is determined, then the um and it is. Um noted to the agencies that they are, have the ability to apply for these grants. Then we put together, the agencies put together how they're going to utilize these dollars. So when it comes to us, these dollars have already been determined how they will be allocated. And have been approved by um JAG and can only be used yeah for those items. Um what these items would be um that they're looking at is the purpose of this grant. Is to fund the LPD upgrading and expansion of the camera systems. By placing cameras and radio networking um as opposed to the current system, which is cellular. Um which would use a cellular and fiber related video images. Um Inham County Sheriff's Office is also going to receive a portion. Of these grants to purchase digital media uh analytic devices uh related to their software. And um these um would be actually uh cause us. Um a reduction in what we currently pay um to service our cameras and to have those. Um on um with our IT and Chief Green.
Yes, ma'am.
If there anything else you'd like to add to this before we see if there are any questions?
I I'll say this, the Justice Assistance Grant, uh first and foremost, the reason why we even qualify the grant. And we're on one of the only few uh departments in the tri- tri-county area that actually qualify. Because we share our part one crimes uh to the FBI, the Uniform Crime Reports. Uh we cooperate with them, we're transparent, and we're one of the few and only departments in this area to do that. And because uh the county is connected uh with the city, they get a portion of that. And this is a formula grant, just like you said, uh Councilmember Woods. And the formular is designated uh by the Bureau of Justice, Justice Assistance Grant. They conduct that formula based on the population, based on the crime level. And what we did for this year was to uh we wanted to make sure we were doing the best we could. Uh for fiscal management of our public video systems. And annually, we spent about fifty-one thousand dollars per year. Uh for cellular and fiber costs uh for about forty-five different sites. The sites have, you know, a number of cameras, and some of them are cellular, some of them are fibering. But the overall cost is about fifty-one thousand dollars. And so based on this formula, uh the city of Lansing gets ninety-five thousand dollars. And the county gets ten thousand of that, so. Look, um the my math's off a little bit, but it comes out to a hundred and six thousand dollars for both. And so what will happen with this is uh we can place this radio link, and I'm not the IT person on this. But this radio link, what it does is uh if we put a radio link in, uh which we intend to do. It would eliminate that annual fifty dot fifty-one thousand dollar cost uh for the the cellular. And the um also the fiber cost, and many of our rate, our video systems are antiquated anyway. Uh they're not high definition. Uh we've certainly uh used them in some unfortunate events, some homicides, some robberies. Uh to support the cases uh for a prosecutor. Uh the video system has been a uh definitely been advantageous for us specifically. Uh in violent crime uh to support those cases for that. And so the radio link for us uh is a cost saving to the city, and it will also increase. The capability of the video system, and also, it also uh creates an environment, whereas in the future. Uh if other departments want to add videos, we saw this with uh the uh city clerk's office. They added some some video cameras and so forth uh this year. If other city departments and other departments uh within the city. Want to connect additional public surveillance cameras uh into the video systems and also radio uses it as well. Uh it would eliminate some of those costs for us down the road, and that's a city savings as a whole, not just. The city of Lansing Police Department getting a benefit. This is a benefit for the entire infrastructure of the city of Lansing.
Okay, and my understanding is there are no ongoing um cost with this. Is that correct?
That is correct. This is a a one-time cost.
Okay, thank you. Um so with that, I have moved the um resolution to accept the grant.
The resolution has been moved, uh Councilmember Dunbar, then Jackson.
Thank you. Just to clarify, the amount of this grant, all of it is going into technology um for the cameras and not into personnel.
Correct.
That's correct.
That's correct.
All right.
Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. Just a few questions. First is. Whose decision was it to use to first apply for expanding the cameras with that money? And like, how much discretion or what, how was that conversation?
Well, first off, this isn't necessarily for expansion of the camera system. This is, we're dealing with cameras that are ten years old, uh twelve years old. So there was always a discussion uh to replace those cameras. As far as addition additional cameras in the uh, the mayor's here, he can correct me on this. But uh last year's budget, there was additional monies uh when Yankowski was here, additional money set aside. For additional cameras, uh so uh one of the problems they ran into on those uh additional cameras was. Uh the cellular and the fiber costs that continue to go up. And you know, and we're getting less than optimal uh viewings uh of the video system because they're so antiquated. And so there was always talk about replacement, and there was previous talks from from last year about additional cameras. And that hasn't happened as of yet, but IT has been working on it.
Thank you, and I just got that language from the whereas, the expansion language, so I guess that wasn't as accurate. Um so that was kind of the decision based on needs, it sounds like, for the most part, and cost savings for the future.
Yeah, you know, definitely uh both of those, for sure, yes.
Okay, so since we're now saving around fifty-one thousand dollars a year. Has there been any discussion on where or what you would do with that money moving forward?
No, there has not been any discussion on that, and we don't have the money in hand at this point. Obviously, it's gonna take some time to build that system. I can't project to you when that radio link will be up. Uh they say twelve months. Um you know, there's some testing. I'm not the IT per person, you know, to really give you that answer.
Would you?
If I could interject real quick, Councilmember Jackson, the grant allows us two years. Um from accepting the grant, two years to utilize those funds.
Would you, um I guess, I know you can't speak completely about future budgets, but would you be willing to work with? City council and or some of the demands from the people you heard and other citizens about how to use that saved money?
Well, I think that'd be not a decision for me as chief of police. That'd be a decision for the administration on how to move forward any savings. Uh savings don't usually come back to me. There's always a predetermined uh pot. For that money to be spent, not for my discretionary spending.
Mr. Mayor, you wanna speak?
Well, we'll certainly provide a a comprehensive budget to you at the end of March. Um that will break out all of the different costs for each department. Um any savings in any department, it's all one big pot of dollars that we're allocating, except for the. The one point two five percent, which we put into many of the services that I think Councilman Jackson is talking about. So we will, once again, get you that breakdown of the uh the few million dollars we spend there. The uh the federal uh dollars that we spend on homeless and shelters and and mental health. Um we spend a lot of money on that stuff. Um I don't know that fifty thousand dollars, we spend millions. Um so Councilman, we will certainly have that breakdown for you when we present the budget.
Thank you, and then last kind of area here. Would you say that the picture quality would be better so you can see clearer about what's going on with the new system?
I would say that for us to spend fifty-one thousand dollars annually. For uh systems that are outdated and antiquated as far as video technology. I think, you know, that is probably uh maybe uh, I'm trying to find the right word for it, but.
Less public resources.
Less than efficient for us uh to demonstrate that, so you're absolutely right, President.
Um and probably my real last question this time. Does these camera systems as proposed have anything to do with like body cameras or things turning on automatically or at a touch or anything like that?
Uh no, sir. These these particular cameras are the public video system. Uh I don't know, remember the exact year, but I think we're talking eleven years or so. Uh there is signage uh that you're entering into the zone uh where there's public video systems available. And uh there's nothing automatic about them at all. They're they're on at all times, except when they go down as a result of. Bad cellular uh connection or, you know, fiber issues. They're up twenty-four seven, other than that.
Thank you. Um will this add any more stations?
This radio link has the um possibility to add. This radio link has the possibility to add additional cameras if the city so chooses to move in that direction. It has the capability anyway.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. I see no further questions. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the adoption of the resolution accepting the grant.
Get my mouse to participate on the resolution accepting the grant, Councilmember Spadefor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes, but only because it's not going to personnel.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Seven years, zero days, the resolution is adopted, and we are to the Martin Luther King Corridor Improvement Bylaws.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. So what we have before us is a resolution approving the bylaws for the South Martin Luther King Boulevard Corridor Improvement Authority. Vice President Hussein provided a lot of good information earlier in his comments about the formation of the corridor. It, you know, it's one of several corridors we have. We're trying to do one along Grand River. We've got one along Saginaw. I can't remember the other ones we have, but they serve a very good purpose. It's comprised of business leaders along that corridor who are working to do certain improvements. The the bylaws have been, if I'm not mistaken, have been developed in concert with our city attorney's office. And with that, unless I missed anything, I would move the resolution for approval of the bylaws.
Proper motion is before us. Are there any questions for Councilmember Spitzley? Sing, okay, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll if his mouse is ready.
Yes, I am. Councilmember Spitzley.
It's a state.
Don't ask me. Yeah.
Councilmember Wood.
Yeah.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Ryan, yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spadefor.
Yes.
Seven years, zero days, the resolution is adopted, and we are to Act One of Twenty Twenty-One.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. So what we have before us is an acquisition of easement for road and non-motorized improvements for Forest Road and Collins Road. Now, this came before us in development and planning last week. And what we had, what we asked was that we have, I'm looking, Mr. Kilpatrick or one of the folks from his area be a part of the discussion to kind of give an overview.
He's here.
Okay, Izzy, if you can bring him in. So what they're what they're doing is some road improvements, a roundabout, and some other improvements along the road up there by Forest and Collins. One of the things that we were told is that there were going to be approximately seventy trees removed. There was some concern in development and planning because it's a scenic route. And we wanted to make sure that the removal of those trees didn't detract from the the aesthetics of of the road there. We also wanted to have the rest of council have the benefit of looking at the mapping of the conceptual drawings of the roundabout and the improvements so that you guys were able to ask any questions. And so we can have those folks come in, and that would be great.
Certainly, I believe.
Oh, sorry, I just changed to panelist if he's going to have to share images. It'll just take a second.
That's fine. I I would have to bring up some images. I don't have any with me right now to share, but I can talk through, and if we want to, I can then bring them up kind of as I'm talking to Sherry's screen. But I'll I'll give you an overview of the project we are planning to do here, which is, it's actually, and I can put my video on, I don't know if that's better or worse to be able to see me. But really, what we're planning to do is for the McLaren project, we're able to put a number of funding sources together. So along the Forest Road corridor, and this is not the neighborhood area, but this is from the West Drive of the University Club parking lot. Actually, I think the East Drive of that, it would be widened by a half lane. So we could actually have a turn lane into University Club, McLaren driveways, and the Henry Center and Candlewood Suites where the golf course is. So that would provide a a center turn lane. Then we would put a pathway on the south side of the road up to the Collins intersection, a roundabout at the Forest Collins intersection. And then we would do road repaving from the Forest Harrison intersection all the way down to Collins and Dunkle, and then reconfigure the road further down to Jolly. So we could have basically bike lanes on Collins all the way up to the roundabout, and then we would have the pathway network along Forest over to Harrison, where there's already shoulders on both Harrison and Forest continuing to the east. So I know that's a description without a map, and I can try and pull up a map to share if that would help. And can also then describe funding sources if you'd like to have that, as well as some some information on on timeframe.
And I appreciate that. I just, it's it's a little, I'm a little, it's a little jarring right now because I think when we had talked in development and planning, we specifically asked for this information to be brought today so that council members could have the benefit of reviewing it. So I I'm just a little confused as to why we don't have that stuff today.
Okay, I I apologize for that. I was, okay, here we do have some some information up.
Andy, it's my screen, so you just tell me what to do, man.
Okay, all right.
I make that thing bigger. That's what I'm going to vote for.
All right, so this is the project limits that really shows. And again, we have multiple funding sources here. So there's a state funding source, and that pays for the work on Forest Road that I was describing. So the project limits here talks about the state funding. And really, even though the limits are shown almost all the way to four ninety-six, one twenty-seven, the actual widening for the center turn lane is just a little bit to the east, to the right there, where the main parking lot for the University Club is. And at that point in time, correct, right in that area, to the east, that would become three lanes in that section. So it's really, it's it's three lanes now, but two lane, two travel lanes with two bike lanes. So it's three lanes of width, and it would be, say, three and a half lanes. So we would be taking away the southern bike lane, the eastbound bike lane, and that would then become a pathway on the south side of the road along the McLaren and MSU Foundation frontage. And then about where the R is in project limits, which is the driveway to the Henry Center and Candlewood Suites. At that point in time, the pathway or the main kind of path would cross to the north side, following along the north side of Forest all the way over to Harrison. And so that is kind of the the pathway link. That pathway is funded with federal C-MAC, so congestion mitigation and air quality funding. So that is kind of paired together. And then at at the intersection of Forest and Collins, that would be a roundabout. So the discussion there, exactly. Thank you, Peter, for the annotation there. And this is not what people would think of with like a traffic circle in a neighborhood. This is larger than the one at Moore's River Drive, more like what you see. Well, maybe not quite that big. Thanks. But but similar to what you see out in Okemos, just off Okemos Road. And so it would be a single lane roundabout, and so that is really the work on Forest. So it's it's repaved all the way in that project limits, but then widened just in the area along the McLaren frontage. And then I think the other one that was kind of sideways going down Collins, at that point in time, that is a repaving of Collins from the Forest Collins intersection all the way down to Dunkle. Correct.
And Andy, can you show us generally where the 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 removal of the trees are going to be? And I know that it has to be done within a certain time as not to disturb the bat migration thing going on there.
Correct. So the majority of the trees that will be removed in the right-of-way is along the golf course and then south along Collins Road. There are some that are along that Forest Road section, but it is kind of behind the trees that are along Forest Road. So it's on the McLaren and MSU Foundation property, not right along the roadway. And those, again, as you pointed out, they need to be removed by the end of March to comply with federal regulations with with the bats. We are working with MSU to replace the trees that are along Collins Road. Right now, they're about where the pathway is, sorry, on Forest. As Forest goes around the curve, it kind of looks like Collins, but it is Forest Road. So along the south edge from the roundabout to Harrison, there's some trees there that are basically right where the pathway is, and we are looking to replace those with white pine on the golf course property. And so we're working with MSU. They would like kind of a an offset line of trees to prevent errant balls from making it their way to the roadway, and then would also provide that buffer for the golf course. And then, as I think I I pointed out, but this is not going to change the width of the roadway on Collins from the roundabout all the way to Jolly. We would reconfigure the road. It's currently three lanes. However, there are few, very few places where you can actually turn left. So the places on the west side of the road where you need to turn left to, I think it's Alliance or Technology and Biotechnology, we would widen at that point in time to have a small center turn lane pocket. But other than that, the roadway width would not change, and it would be just a a restriping of the current width so that we have two lanes with a bike lane, and then we have a short left turn pocket where needed to be able to turn to the the roads on the west side of the road.
Thank you. One of the other questions and concerns that was brought up in development and planning was, you know, the roundabout as it relates to, you know, emergency vehicles or snow removal and and things like that. And so that was addressed, that there would be minimal impact on it as well. So with that, I move the resolution, and then if council, other council members have questions.
Right, there's a proper motion before us. Are there any further questions? I honestly thought you were giving a static about the bats, Councilmembers Spitzley, but I.
No, I was, I I wanted to show Andy Kilpatrick that I actually listened.
Paying attention.
About that whole thing.
Councilmember Wood's got a question, though.
Thank you. This is more of a statement, and we made this as part of Ways and Means when we were talking about accepting dollars there. And I know we reached out to Councilmember Garza at the time just simply because once we start doing some cutting, you're going to have people within that corridor that are going to be concerned about that. I hope we're getting information out to people so it can decrease the anxiety instead of waiting until they're on the phones with everybody saying, you know, there are people out here cutting trees, and I know they're going to cut mine next. So I hope we continue to try to make sure that we're getting that information out to the neighborhood.
Thank you. And there is, actually, I didn't realize that in the other pages of that document are maps and pictures of the tree removal plan. So we'll make sure that gets posted on the council website. I know Sherry's listening. She shared it with me, so I know she's got it. That's it from, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Garza, your hand was behind a window. Go ahead.
Thank you, Council President. Actually, Mr. Kilpatrick, so I understand that, you know, the trees need to be moved or removed by a certain time because of the bats migration. And I think that's in March at some point. Do you have an exact date when you guys will be starting and in what your plan is to notify the public?
We do not have an exact date right now. We are putting this out for bids for the tree removal. So once we have the bids back, then we'll have a better idea. I'm open to suggestions. Our thought was with this project, we would have a a page on the city's website specifically for the Forest Collins project that would have information. We can also provide that through Neighborhood News and to council members and, you know, Forest View Neighborhood Association or whoever you think might want this information.
Yeah, definitely Forest View Neighborhood Association. I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garza. I see no other discussion.
Mr. President, I I do see Mitch Whistler's hand up. I don't know whether he had something to add.
It it appears that the council has no more questions, but I can ask Mr. Whistler if he has anything to add.
He's probably going to correct everything I said, so.
We're cutting out all the trees.
No.
Don't say that.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I wasn't going to. No. Andy did very well. I just wanted to add that the the tree removal bid is due back the twenty-fifth of this month.
Thank you very much. So that is Thursday?
Yeah.
Very good. All right. Thank you very much. The next thing we got to do is vote on this. So if the clerk would please call the roll.
Okay, on the resolution, Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spadefor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Seven years, zero days, the resolution is adopted, which takes us to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. So that's any item related to the operation of the city, city government for the City of Lansing. You can raise your hand using the usual Zoom methods. And again, once again, once the first speaker finishes, we will stop accepting additional raised hands. And in the meantime, while folks are raising their hand, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
All right, Mr. Vice President.
I would move that all items be considered as read and full, and that the appropriate referrals be made by you, President Spadefor.
I can handle that. So to see council would vote, the clerk please call the roll.
On the referrals, Councilmember Dunbar.
There we go. Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Jackson.
Uh.
Councilmember Spadefor.
Here, yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember.
Yes.
Seven years, zero days, the referrals are ordered. So we have items from the city clerk regarding municipal boards and commissions.
Place down file.
Executive Order twenty twenty-one dash zero zero two.
Place down file.
From the mayor, grant application for the Natural Resources Trust Fund.
Ways and Means.
We have obsolete, two items related to obsolete property rehabilitation act district for eleven oh two South Washington.
Sorry, play development planning.
And two items relating to an obsolete property rehabilitation act certificate for the same address.
Got it. Development planning.
And grant amendments, Victims of Care, Victims of Crime Act.
Ways and Means.
Communications and petitions, and communication from Kathy Miles regarding proposed ordinances to repeal certain actions as misdemeanors.
Create an equity diversity and inclusion.
Communication from Sarah Brown and support of the Morse Park Pool.
Place a file.
Notification from the Liquor Control Commission of the Transfer of Ownership of an STD and SDM License Miko's Party Store at fifty-one oh one South Pennsylvania.
City operations.
And a communication from Laura Lauren Whaley supporting the proposed ordinance repeals.
Yeah, the Committee on Equity Diversity and Inclusion. Yeah, the committee on equity, diversity and inclusion.
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the item that had to do with Morse Park Pool, um, as I asked before, could we have this sent to the parks board? They will be making, uh, recommendations for the park millage, um, dollars. And if you could please make sure that that is moved to the parks board.
Mr. Mister clerk, would you please make note? Thank you.
Will do. Okay. Then we are to motion of excuse absence.
Uh, do we have a motion to excuse absences? Council member Jackson.
Thank you. I would move to excuse councilman Betts per his request until March 1st.
Very good. Council member Jackson's made a proper motion. Let the clerk please call the roll.
On the ex- uh, excused absence, council member Garza.
No.
Council member Hussein.
Oh.
Or Jackson.
Yes.
Council member Spatterford.
Yes.
Council member Spitzley.
No.
Council member Wood.
No.
Council member Dunbar.
No.
Two days, five days, the motion is not adopted. Um, and that takes us to remarks by council members.
Sure. I have one quick thing. Um, March 8th, we've invited the redistricting commission of Michigan to present briefly at the committee of the whole on their updates and progress there. Uh, I don't believe, Mr. Clerk, that the redistricting numbers will affect the city election or the census numbers will affect this year's city election, but I know they have a lot to share with about, um, the census and things, how they're working on the, that. So they have asked to present before us, so we'll give them a few moments of our time. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you. Briefly, um, just for all the people to, a heads up about ranked choice voting. It's something that's been kind of on and off the radar for a while. It's on my radar along with a lot of other people. And I plan on talking to the city attorney more about what to do, as I know work was done by a few council members last year. So if everybody listening wants to, or anybody just to kind of look into it so that you can form an opinion early as this might come up. And also just to maybe voice your opinion, whether you think ranked choice voting is appropriate for Lansing. Because it would require councils to do a bunch of things and also the population to vote on it in an election. Or in a, yeah, and during an election. Thank you.
Okay, we are to remarks by the mayor.
Mr. Mayor, anything for the closing? All right. Thank you. And that's it.
All right, then, uh, we are to public comment on city government related matters. That's any item related to the operation of the city. And again, once the first speaker is done, we will stop, stop accepting additional raised hands. And that first speaker is Loretta Stanaway, who will be followed by Ash.
Good evening. I have two things I'd like to touch on tonight. One is relating to the, uh, Andy Kilpatrick's information about the trees on Forest Road and Collins Road and whatever, um, it is through there. I hope that part of their plans aren't just the electronic and media plans, but that they have intentions and expectations to send a mailed postcard to every address whose trees would be impacted by these changes. I mean, you cannot expect that everybody is online and although most are, some are not. So I hope that the postcards being mailed out are on your agenda. Um, second, um, I just want to speak in advance of what I suspect is coming down the line. Um, in support of our police and fire departments. And I think that for a city of our size, we have exceptional officers for the most part. Uh, there's no perfect department and any department can always use some tweaking and improvement, given that's the truth. Um, there's always, um, somebody that's going to be criticizing something. And I think that we need to stand in support of our officers in our city and say that we appreciate them and the risk they take day in and day out and counter some of this orchestrated criticism that's coming from a very vocal but small majority of people. So I support our police and our fire and I want them to know that the public as a whole does support them. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so our first speaker is finished, so we will stop accepting additional raised hands. Um, and next, uh, we have Ash.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Just wanted to say, first of all, the last speaker was criticizing our criticism. What irony anyways. Um, I'm speaking today to demand a vote of no confidence for Andy Shore, to demand council member Betts resign, to man, to man a hearing on the Lansing Police Department murder of Anthony Hulan and the police brutality on Baker Street, to demand you shut down the jail and support the resolution to defund the police, to demand that the council do something to force police officers to wear their masks and to demand that you do not allow city departments to dip into HRCS community funds. So even though a no confidence vote wouldn't remove Shore, it would signal to the people of the city that the council understands what he's done and cares about what he's done to harm, um, other people and could harm in the future, other people. Said this before and I will keep saying it because it's disgustingly egregious. Andy was too afraid to interact with protesting city employees and retirees whose healthcare he stole, but he felt comfortable enough to interact with white supremacists and militiamen on the day of the presidential inauguration, calling them peaceful when their intent and impact is not and will never be peaceful. And if you're listening on city TV, Brandon Betts resign. You're not fit for office. Your comments to Mike Lynn were disturbing, hostile, unhinged and unbefitting of a leader. This, this thing that you did is not going to blow over by the time you get back. If you are even coming back, um, valid criticisms reactions will still be here. We, we aren't going to forget what you did. So stop wasting everybody's time, show a little comportment and resign so a replacement can be found. Thank you to the council members who didn't let yet another cowardly Betts absence go unchecked. Um, disappointing leaders who call white supremacists peaceful and harass black activists are only part of Lansing's problems. Once again, the coroner ruled Anthony Hulan's death a murder. Then officials lied to people about it for half a year. Anthony Hulan's murderers are still working in the jail and known murderers not only kept their job, but they faced no legal punishment for what they did. The police brutality on Baker Street happened because when you allow murderers to keep their jobs, it makes it clear to their peers that the tactics used can be continually used without punishment. It could happen again and again and again, because you've done nothing about it. Not only should the murders of Anthony Hulan be fired and tried, the jail needs to be shut down, it, like, as a whole. We don't need the city jail. It's a cesspool where people and stuff murder people without redress and it's a drain on the city's financial resources. Lansing is one of a very small number, a very small number of cities in Michigan with its own jail. The city does not need it. So do something about the officers not wearing their masks too. They're, they're abusing their discretion and you decide to allow them to enforce this rule that they're not following themselves. The discretion is endangering people they come into contact with and why aren't you doing anything about it? So in summary, there must be a vote of no confidence for sure. Brandon Betts resign. There must be a hearing about the brutality committed by Lansing place police officers, including the murderer of Anthony Hulan. The murderers must be fired. The jail needs to go. Support the resolution to defund the police. You also need to do something about officers pandemic specific endangerment of citizens. Don't allow other city departments to use funds set aside for community through the HRCS grant program. And ranked, ranked, ranked choice voting is like always appropriate. Yes, please. That would be fantastic. And again, why are the murderers who murdered Anthony Hulan, who the coroner said murdered him, still working? Why are they still working? Why have you not done anything about it? What are you going to do about it? Are you going to do anything about it? Cause they murdered him and like, that's just, they're just still there. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, next we have Zach Whaley, followed by Daniel Black.
Thanks for remembering my last name. Uh, clerk Swob. I appreciate that. That's how I know I've made it. Um. Uh, to previous commenters, I just want to say, uh, and by previous commenters, I mean the red of Stanaway. Um, all we can do is speak on our own behalf and not behalf on the rev, the public on the whole. Um, so feel free to share your thoughts, uh, that are yours, but stop trying to portray them as the feelings of the general public. Uh, along those lines, I absolutely support the measure, um, to, um, add the traffic circle. They've been proven to be more safe. Uh, and I support Loretta's point that it should be sent out in mail. Um, accessibility is important. She's right. Everybody isn't online. And it's important that they know what's going to happen with their trees. Um, along those lines, um, ranked choice voting also is very important. So I would support that if that does come to a vote. Uh, early in this call, Chief Green brought up the FBI's uniform crime reporting program as the reason for why, uh, Lansing was eligible for the JAG grant that we're putting towards new cameras, which I'm hoping will make my FOIA requests, uh, a little bit quicker, but I'm not really holding my breath. Um, so the FBI's UCR program defines violent murder, uh, violent crime as murders, um, non negligent manslaughter, rape, robbery and aggravated assault. So since the Lansing Police Department reports their data to this database, I can let you know that in 2019, out of 1,421 violent crimes, Lansing Police Department with a budget of around $50 million at the time cleared 549 of them. It's roughly about 38%. So just know that if you were one of your loved ones is, um, what was it murdered? Um, non negligently manslaughter, raped, ro- or robbed or aggravated assaulted, you have a 38% chance of them clearing that crime. Now that doesn't mean solving the crime, that just means closing it. That may be that they find that there's no evidence and that's it. Um, if you look at the budget, it comes out to about a hundred thousand dollars per cleared crime. So again, as I do every time I'm on one of these calls, I would challenge counsel. I would challenge Carol Seaman's office. I would challenge Chief Green. I would challenge the mayor to find other ways to invest this money that has a better return on investment. You all understand the economics of ROI. Right now we're spending a hundred thousand dollars. The amount that we just spent, what, half an hour discussing in this grant from JAG about just to solve one, or sorry, not solve, clear one violent crime. That's our return on that investment. There are so many other things that could be done for the city that are so much better, so much more supportive. Think about what, you know, two more social workers not associated with the police or just direct aid even to citizens for a hundred thousand dollars to do as opposed to solving one crime right now, like they are doing. Appreciate all of your time. I appreciate, uh, council member, uh, Jackson's comments on the, uh, grant funding. And, uh, I appreciate all of you. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, next we have Daniel Black, followed by Kyle.
I think he's muted.
Are you able to unmute yourself?
Aha. First time in this kind of format. Hey, good evening, folks. Uh, I've been in communication with, uh, three or four of you already on the sidewalk snow clearing policy and ordinance. And when I, when I get word of the moratorium, uh, with a deep freeze or a reset on the time clock because of a, of another new snow file fall, uh, uh, prescriptions, groceries, medical appointments, they don't wait, uh, for that kind of a, uh, a moratorium or they don't take a moratorium or a reset, uh, before they can go out and, uh, attend to those duties. Uh, so, uh, I do understand the, the litigation possibilities. If you get, uh, too stringent, too strict, uh, on, on a snow clearing policy. Uh, yet I hope something, someone or somewhere, we can get away from what seems to be a, a week or milquetoast kind of ordinance or policy on this snow clearing. Uh, when we look back to, uh, February 11th of 2005, uh, with, uh, Chantel Buckner. Uh, you, you've got a, you've got to kind of ask, uh, her being killed versus the $15,000 that need to be spent for a sidewalk. Uh, next year, next month, next week, uh, somebody being maimed or killed, uh, versus a more strict and stringent snow clearing policy. Which one would you rather have? Thank you.
You, uh, next is Kyle, followed by Laura Anderson.
Heather, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, okay. So thank you for everyone for being here tonight. The, um, also thank you, uh, for not excusing Brandon Betts' absence. I can't speak for people to first ward, but I'd love it if he would resign. The, um, I don't know where to start, I guess. I mean, I think Loretta's comments that dissent is orchestrated or dangerous. Um, you know, I, I, I'm here because I care. I'm not here because, you know, of some orchestration. What I do want to say though, is I've done some reading this weekend on the situation or the, I guess we'll call it the relationship between the city and Michael Lynn Jr. And I, I, it just is amazing to me how we, this, the city just continues to just dig itself deeper and deeper. Because this, this letter from HR, I wasn't able to read in full, but, uh, from what I did see, it was weak. And the argument was fundamentally flawed. Uh, it's, you know, it stands behind the strong stance of he violated his oath of office. Uh, because citizens were put in danger at a critical time, when in reality, the sheriff had a bad Saturday, right? The chief had a bad Saturday, right? No, citizens were not put in danger, right? Nothing happened. So in reality, right? He didn't violate his oath of office because nothing happened. So there's that. Um, and then I also, I, I stumbled across the Facebook post the first time. I hadn't seen him, the things that started all this. And I just want to say, if the chief of police is still on, you need to really figure out what's going on with the culture of your department. Because if those, those, those Facebook posts, I was searching for a word and the word that I found was sadistic, right? The idea that you would, in, if the goal was to honor an officer, the idea that in honoring an officer, we're going to relive the final moments of a human being's life. Year after year after year. Post a picture of the, of the, of them in uniform, say thank you for your service, R I P. What is, what is this reliving? What is this like? It's, it's disgusting. Um, but enough on that. I do want to direct my, direct, uh, my attention to, uh, Mayor Shore. Uh, you, on Facebook, you released your, your vision, um, which I thought, oh, like, in all honesty, it's pretty, it's a pretty flashy site you got. Um, it does, it does strike me as odd though, you know, the, the nickname you've gotten around town is propaganda. And I think it's interesting how you have people like basically begging, begging for, for real systematic change and justice in the city. And what do we get? We get a PR campaign, right? For an election year because Andy's got to get reelected. Um, please resign. I'm, I'm so sick of, of the games. I'm so sick of, you just, it feeling as though you, you don't genuinely care. It does not feel like you genuinely care. And if you do, please do better because it's, it's not, it's not working. Um, can't wait to see the budget in March. Thank you. Defund the police.
Thank you. Um, Laura Anderson, followed by Maurice Nelson.
Hello again. Um, this is the first time that I have spoken to the council, uh, this evening. And, um, Anthony Hulan's, um, uh, homicide, to, to be legally accurate, uh, has just absolutely broken my heart as a fellow Lansing resident. Um, uh, it, it's just unfathomable to me that, um, George Floyd was murdered uh, with a choking mechanism. And here in Lansing, the same thing had just happened in our city jail and none of us knew it and the press didn't know it. And then, and the family could get no information. The family members have just been breaking my heart. And then when confronted with, uh, finally they decide that they have to actually get an attorney and file a suit to get any information. And to be told by our mayor that, um, he didn't know any earlier, uh, it, that just isn't possible. You know, given documents were going across his desk and, um, I, I just hate what this says about our city and, and the way, um, we treat our citizens and what we look like. Um, uh, please, please, uh, um, all of you as good, uh, people with good souls. Please start turning our city around. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next we have Maurice Nelson, followed by the advocates.
Hello, everyone. I'm sorry that I, uh, used the wrong agenda to, uh, start my, uh, earlier speech. Uh, this is my first, uh, uh, city council meeting. Um, the purpose of me, uh, approaching the council is that, uh, as I mentioned earlier, um, uh, the council has, uh, have been involved in constructing, um, licenses for the marijuana industry. And, uh, I think prior to, um, uh, the, the city did not have, uh, access to or granted the social equity program. Since then, um, when you first, since you've enacted your, um, city ordinance on marijuana and your certain licenses in a certain district, you have accepted the social equity program as part of your, uh, uh, application progress. So basically what I'm asking is to have a two-prong approach, that one that the city go back and look at, uh, that ordinance and see how they can adopt, uh, any kind of resolution to a. any kind of resolution to allow more inclusion and diversity within that industry. Um, uh, I recently saw that Detroit has recently, um, uh, accepted their social equity program and put forth a framework to use. So, um, I don't know if that's something the city council can look at as a framework and move it forward. Uh, but I would like for the city to possibly look into that. And also to, uh, use maybe some of those dollars that were mentioned earlier, uh, that, uh, that are used for our, uh, our public officers, to use some of those dollars to educate. Because part of the social equity program is to educate the community on the benefits and, uh, some of the laws and and take away some of the stigmatism that's associated with the old industry when it was prohibited. And so I would like to be a part of that forefront, uh, in partnership with the city of Lansing, because I've, uh, met those qualifications for social equity program, to reach out to the community, to reach out to law enforcement, to be a partnership, uh, to help, one, bring down some of those barriers, also to have some transparency, uh, as far as the application process for inclusion, uh, and diversity, uh, in the industry. Um, and so that's all I ask. Uh, and I, uh, will, uh, give back the rest of my time and I wish you all to be safe and I thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Um, our next speaker is identified as the Advocates, followed by Kelsey Briann.
This is Mike Lynn. Um, as you all know, I am the advocate. I am of the, and that's all I've ever done. Uh, but first I want to talk about this council, and you guys continuously stating that you can't speak on things because there's lawsuits in place. It's cowardly. It's ridiculous, and it's furthering the harm. Two weeks ago, I came on here and I begged you all to help me. I've been coming on this council for over a year now, explaining to you the issues that I've been going through with the city, and none of you have spoken on any of it on here. I've talked to several of you in my inbox. You'll tell me how egregious these things are, but then get on here and we'll do absolutely nothing. It's cowardly, and it ended up in termin- in a termination for me because you allowed those things to continue on. And it ended up in Anthony Hulon being killed, and the four people still in there. And so a week from now, or two weeks from now, when Patricia Spitz's cousin gets killed in there, or Brian T., your nephew or somebody gets killed in there, how will you feel that you stood here and stayed quiet? That is the moment we have. That is the issue that we have right here. When a chief can write a four-page letter about me sharing his phone number that he's had for fifteen years as a beat cop, as a community cop, in the Roy Ford projects, remember he was handing that out on all types of business cards? Everybody in here's got that phone number. He wrote a four-page letter. You would think I left fifteen bodies behind. I'm fired. Ten days after the incident. Silence from y'all. Four people choked a man to death inside the jail. They're at home right now, eating good, feet up, still got their healthcare, still being paid. When will this stop? When will it end? Two weeks ago, I begged you all to help these situations. Begged you all to just stand up one time. Get out of my inbox. Don't text me no more with thoughts and prayers. Speak it here. There's four seats up for election. I think it's, it's, it should be noted, as you all may know, I'm co-lead at, at BLM Lansing. I've most recently been named to community organization chair with the NAACP. You will have to come through me before you get elected. You will have to come through me. I will be sitting on a panel. You will have to answer questions to, through us before you get elected. I will not forget any of this. I won't forget Brian T. Jackson's speech about how he can't speak on these things. Because there's lawsuits, do me, do not mean you cannot stop the issue that presented for somebody to be killed. Y'all need to grow some before somebody else, whether it be one of these last names on this screen, ends up dead somewhere. And Andy Shore, fire me ain't gonna silence me. The only thing that's gonna happen is you're no longer gonna be mayor, and all of you on city council are gonna have to figure out settlement agreements for all of this bullshit that he's done over the last four years.
Thank you. Next we have Kelsey Briann, followed by, uh, Farhan Sheikh Omar.
I can not hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Kelsey Briann. I spoke earlier. Um, I speak tonight in support of America Twenty to Life. Michael Lynn Jr., who just spoke earlier, Lansing Black Lives Matter, the Poor People's Campaign, and as a woman of faith with a calling in my life to be an advocate. Um, first off, I just want to second everything that Michael Lynn Jr. spoke. Um, completely agree and stand in solidarity with him. Um, as well as a vote of no confidence and a resignation of Mayor Andy Shore. Um, also that we need to fire all the officers in the murder of Anthony Hulon, and then the beating of the man on Baker Street, and look into criminal charges on those people. Um, personally, I support ranked, uh, choice voting and travel circles, sorry, traffic circles, and clearing snow for everyone affected, especially those who use mobility devices, as a lack of access further marginalizes an already extremely marginalized people group, including myself as a disabled person. Black Lives Matter, defund and divest the police, wear a mask, Mr. Shore, see the door, propaganda, propaganda has got to go. Brandon Betts, please resign and let us move on and heal from your damaging performative activism. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Next we have Farhan Sheikh Omar, followed by, uh, phone number, and it's in zero one nine. Go ahead, Farhan.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Um, I have a quick question. Uh, is Brandon Betts still getting paid? Even though he's not showing up to these meetings?
This is your time to speak, not a question. Sure.
All right, uh, Mr. Mayor, you said that, um, in regards to Michael Lynn's firing, you said that we have procedures in place in our collective bargaining agreements for discipline of employees who act out against other employees. Uh, that's perfect, but how come this collective bargaining agreement was not, um, used when Brandon Betts, uh, harassed and intimidated Michael Lynn? Last time I checked, they were both, um, city employees. So how come this rule does not apply to Brandon Betts? Also, um, Mr., is, is Chief Green here? Is he on here? I'll take that as a no. In his letter to, uh, the fire chief, Mr. Green stated that he viewed Michael Lynn's intentional actions as harassing and meant to harm him and his family. Now, let's remember what Michael Lynn actually wrote on Facebook. All he said was, and I quote, "How about we give Chief Green a call and let him know how we feel about his department posting about this dog today?" That's harassing and meant to harm a police chief? We call that harassing? We call that harassment? If that's harassment and meant to harm Chief Green and his family, how do you think Anthony Hulon's family feels today? When their son, their brother, was murdered in that jail? And the medical examiner called his death a murder? And his, and the police officers who did that are still working, getting paychecks. And they're still making arrests and writing police reports. How do you think they feel? If Chief Green is gonna make allegations like this, where he's saying Michael Lynn actions were har- har- harassing him and meant to harm him, he needs to, he needs to provide evidence. He needs to show us and all of you guys that Michael Lynn actually committed a crime here. Because we don't just make allegations around here. He knows. He's a police officer. You cannot just make allegations without any evidence, without any proof. And for you guys to just sit back and let Mr. Lynn get fired without any evidence is a shame. It's another way for you guys to silence another black man in this city. This is something that we expect from you guys, from our local government. It's a shame. It's, it is literally a modern-day lynching. What you guys have done to Michael Lynn is modern-day lynching. You guys should all be ashamed of yourself, all of you guys.
Thank you. Um, the next speaker is someone with the phone number, and it's in zero one nine, followed by Floretta.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, how you doing? My name is Corey Holland. Um, I recently found out about a story dealing with a young lady in your town named Karen Taylor. She, um, had, uh, filed a lawsuit against the local court, uh, for discrimination. I found out about this, and I was in the early stages of, uh, trying to figure out a way to get this planning going. And, um, I contacted your office, um, I don't know how many days ago it was, but I asked about how do you participate in these type of meetings, and also asked them, uh, how do you submit documents and things of that nature? Now, I'm visually impaired because of a car accident. I was told, first of all, uh, I could submit any documents I wanted. And I made sure the individual, I, uh, the deputy clerk who I was dealing with, I made sure he knew I was, uh, disabled. And that if he needed me to, uh, if the documents I was submitting would not be allowable, then I need to have time, uh, to prepare the documents. Make a long way short, those documents never got to you. Well, the documents would have been showing you that Miss Karen Taylor has a point. People should listen. When she says that there's discrimination, especially in the front of the court situation where she was dealing with, uh, that, that racism is real. An individual like Miss Karen Taylor, who do investigations, who might look like individuals who, um, who she's investigating, that's also important. Because what I've experienced in Washington County, the reason why I even started coming down here to talk about this case, is that racism in the front of the court does exist. A lot of times it happens to people of color. They get reports, bogus reports, things of that nature. So when Miss Karen Taylor files a lawsuit and she tells you, hey, this situation is serious, it's real, people should listen to it. My only concern is that I felt like at, at, at one point, I was being censored. Because I felt like if, 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 if you tell someone of the public that whatever you want to submit should be allowed, then that should be your word. It shouldn't be, uh, we'll look over your documents and we'll decide later on if, if it's, if it's city business. Especially when from the beginning, I've been very clear that the individual I'm going to be speaking about is a woman from Lansing. The individual that I will be, uh, talking about is dealing with the court situation, just like my situation was a court situation. So what I could have simply done, the deputy clerk would have let me know early enough, is I could have prepared a brief to show how both of them connected. Then my comments would have been made a part of this, uh, panel. Uh, uh, I don't know how you guys call it. But I just want to say, for persons who are disabled, I feel like I was robbed. I feel like I was robbed an opportunity to submit those information to you guys, so you can get to see that information. Also, the fact that Deputy Clerk knew I was disabled, and he waited to the very last minute so I could not get any of my documents into you, even if I had to write my documents myself. So I understand, you know, there's rules, the council can't speak, understanding all kinds of, uh,
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Your, your three minutes is up.
All right, thank you.
Our next speaker is Floretta, followed by Tobias Webb.
Um, first, I'd like to say that, um, we need to defund the police and invest in the safety of our communities. I echo everything that's been said about the murder of Anthony Hulon. Um, I think the confidentiality agreement that's required for the racial justice and equity alliance is a way to uphold white supremacy. By not having meetings open to the public and by requiring a confidentiality agreement, you are not allowing citizens to critique these elite and mayor-appointed leaders. Black people, indigenous people, and other people of color are not monoliths, and all of our opinions need to be heard. It's a cop-out to say it would encourage free flow and thought of ideas, uh, free flow of thoughts and ideas. Anyone who doesn't have the courage to express their thoughts and ideas about racism does not need to be on a city alliance for racial justice and inclusion. They need to move out of the way and let the real soldiers do the work. I really hope that we get ranked choice voting. I think it will make elections more equitable, and it will give us regular people more power. Um, I would really like our council members to be more courageous and progressive. Um, you guys really need to stand up against these things that are happening. People are talking to you about them. Um, this is not the time to be politically correct. Um, people's lives are in danger. Also, it's hard for me not to see the firing of Michael Lynn as anything other than retribution for his activism in our black community. I want to ask our council to stop allowing this administration to silence oppressed and marginalized voices, and for our council to uplift our voices. Please represent us. I'm finished.
Thank you. Um, next we have Tobias Webb, followed by Danielle.
Hey, y'all. Here for the Lansing Poor People's Campaign again. Want to say, um, that we have the people that murdered Anthony Hulon working in the jail. Um, Andy Shore, that's on you. Why is that still happening? Why, that's harmful to Anthony Hulon's family, as well as harmful to the rest of Lansing. Um, that's just one example where, uh, you know, I've come and asked y'all to be on top of the fact that Andy Shore makes white supremacist moves. Um, and you guys have to watch out for that and combat that. Um, Patricia Spitzley and Kathy Dunbar, your committee, um, feels like it does nothing but slow down equity we should be actively fighting for in Lansing. Um, we haven't heard from you two at the Poor People's Campaign, but we've got, you know, good, important ideas about how to add accountability to the police with the community and build away from this militarized forty-five million dollar funding that they've got and, and make that actually work for the community. Um, so we expect to hear from you guys. You should be reaching out to the community people that, that care enough to do some of this work for you guys. Um, Pastor DJ Knox does, does more work for Lansing than seemingly anyone, uh, in this zoo. Reach out to him and ask him. Um, because if we, if we don't build accountability with the community, we're going to see more stuff just get pushed under the rug. The fact that Chief Green came on asking for better surveillance equipment when he sat on the video of Anthony Hulon being murdered, and that, that didn't get relea- that had to be released to the public through the Heather Hulon's lawyers, I believe. That's another thing, like everybody's saying, there's a lawsuit. Can't talk about everything, so we don't know all the details about that. But, um, yeah, so you guys need to actively combat Andy Shore, the fact that no one's brought together a vote of no confidence for sure. I mean, Pierce Spade, for you live right next door to a guy who, who covered up a murder and is trying to not charge the people. It's, it's like Breonna Taylor in your own, own hometown. Um, and you guys are just cool with, with having meetings with this guy every, every couple of weeks, acting like everything's okay. Everything is not okay. Um, and you guys need to act like it. Um, Heather Hulon is, is gonna be here this week because your guys' inaction has forced all, all of this stuff to go through a lawsuit. Um, rather than the city just doing the right thing in the first place.
Thank you. Um, next is Danielle, followed by Ethan Schmidt.
Hello. So I hope Chief Green is still listening so that I can personally tell him that he screwed up and that he should not be chief of police, and he should be living under a rock, as far as I'm concerned. And sure, the same thing to you. I know you're looking smug right there, but you have failed your constituents. You have put them actively in danger. You have let your city officials kill people. You allowed this. And Anthony Hulon deserves better, and his sister deserves better. But if we cannot bring Anthony back, the best thing that we can do is hold those people that killed him accountable, and that includes you, to me, sure. That means you should be on trial, too. You hit it, and so did Chief Green. You guys hid the evidence. Genuinely hid the evidence of a murder. In any other trial, you would be accessory to murder. And I'm very emotional because he deserved so much better. He was innocent. I'm so angry that I can barely put the words together. And I hope that my anger makes you uncomfortable. Anyway, the best thing that we can do now is change the structure that made it possible for him to die in silence. He died and barely anybody knew. And that is a tragedy all on its own. I need to take a second to collect- I need to take a second to collect myself, but I'm not finished. I also believe that the way that we are running these meetings lends itself to giving the opposition a way to silence us people fighting for our friends in the city. The way that we have the hand system after the first person speaks means that the first person who speaks could take thirty seconds and that would silence a lot of us. So I genuinely look for a better way to allow people to talk. Anthony Hulan and his sister deserve better. And I hope that you, as a council, will give a vote of no confidence to Shore. You should have this done already. This was something that Bets said that he would do and obviously he failed us in a major way. And he deserves to be kicked off of council and he deserves to live under a rock too. But I know that some of you genuinely do have good ideals in your hearts. But you need to be courageous. You need to say what is wrong with this city and you need to stop playing nice with people who are allowing your constituents to die. Please get Shore out. Please get Bets out. You need to do better.
Oh, so, um, ma'am, you're, I'm sorry, your time is up. Our next speaker is Ethan Schmidt, followed by Erica Lynn.
Hello, and thank you for allowing me to speak today. Um, I will not relitigate all of the stuff that has been said. I think it is very clear that we can see a consistent and extremely disturbing pattern among the police in the city. And I do really want to, one thing I do want to stress is that you have seen an unmistakable rise in the community activism around the police department, holding accountable. It is unquestionable that a large part of the city has demanded action and a large part of the city feels unsafe and does not feel protected by those who are supposed to be protecting it. In fact, they feel threatened by those who are supposed to be protecting. And the only tangible action so far has been to fire the person who has been loudest in his dissent. And I hope that everyone in City Council read the letter that Chief Green sent because it was disturbing in a variety of ways. Number one, he seems to claim that we are in a state of emergency and this is, and if every time there's a social disturbance that lasts as long as this is lasting and the chief of police is under so much, is, is coddled so much that he is able to, that sharing a phone number is harassment, I believe that that is a dangerous, dangerous game to play. This is somebody who hands out his phone number very frequently. I have his phone number. I had it already. Many people in my community had his phone number already, but Michael Lynn sharing it is grounds for firing. I think that it was a sorry excuse for a reason to silence somebody who is very vocal in his dissent. I think the fact that nobody has shared anything about what might happen or if they disagree with the decision is also disturbing. And I think it sends a chill through the blood of every single city employee who is trying to speak out. When you don't allow someone to speak and the only tangible action is to fire that person and not anybody else who is, who has committed murder, I believe, by any legal definition, I believe that it creates a very serious problem in the city. And, and I really believe that's, that's a really serious issue that we need to be talking about more. That letter was, was pretty disgusting. And I hope that City Council reads it, sees it, and sees that there is a culture problem in the, within the entire police departments that desperately needs fixing. And there's a serious issue within the city itself that we need to do more about. Because quite frankly, this can't be the only action, is to silence dissent. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Erica Lynn, followed by Erica, someone else.
Thank you. So I just want to point out that three minutes could never be enough for us to truly address all of the things that need to be discussed and all the things that you all seem to just be unwilling to talk about. And none of you at this point even have the courage or decency to even give excuses anymore to why they're not being discussed. But that's neither here nor there because that's the system and it's designed to do exactly what it's doing, which is silence us. Less than a month ago though, I would like to point out, in a very last ditch effort, after not getting help from anywhere else, my husband, Michael Lynn Jr., asked the Board of Fire Commissioners to investigate processes directly related to his situation. It's been clear to us that the city, LFD, have not followed any policies, any guidelines, anything regarding his, uh, rights, his, as an employee, as a citizen. Um, and his concern was that these have been dragged out. Things have been dragged out and allowed for further retaliation. Lo and behold, his fears are actualized and he was finally terminated, something they've been attempting to do for years. The level of collusion and corruption in Lansing has reached a dangerous level. And Chief Green, I hope you're, you're still listening because you should absolutely be ashamed of yourself. Your statement, quote unquote statement, I can only call that a dramatization of events. It is so dangerous, unprofessional, and so irresponsible for you to write out a story that is filled with your opinions, with conjecture, with no evidence, no factual information. It seemed as if you were pissed off. You were offended. You felt disrespected. Very valid, but that doesn't make the things that you said real. You defamed my husband, lied in that statement, and you know you did. You didn't even put it out when it happened. You had to be asked for it. And so funny that you were asked for it after we submitted our defense and our evidence. So if I sound upset about that, I am, because like someone said, that Saturday was a bad day. You dramatized those events in an attack on my husband. You fired him. The city fired him in an attack of retaliation and that is the ultimate attack of retaliation. You all should be nervous at what's happening to our city because what's happening to Mike, to me, to our family, what happened to AJ McKinstry, Darnishaklay, the protesters that were gassed downtown, peace when they were peaceful, the teenager on Dakin Street, the man on Baker Street, the retirees of the city, the homeless in our city. Anthony Hulan being murdered could happen to any one of us and we just keep allowing it to happen. Who knows what else we don't know about? Can anyone not fear speaking up and speaking out? You all seem to feel that you're above reproach. And this is how they try to silence you. They want us to be afraid. But I want you to know that we are not afraid at all. I am not afraid. But something that I want you all to know is that we will not forget any of you that stood by silent while this happened. We will not forget and we are not the silent minority. And you will see that because it is election season and we're not listening to propaganda anymore.
Thank you. Um, next we have Erica, followed by Luna.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, hi, so, um, I'm probably going to say some things that basically just, uh, amplify and, uh, repeat some of the same things you've all heard tonight. Um, I would like to say, uh, thank you for proactively working to accept the, uh, emergency relief funds. I hope that the state legislature does actually do their jobs so that, uh, tenants across the city are able to get the help they so desperately need. Um, but, uh, more importantly, my comment tonight is in support of Black Lives Matter Lansing, the Poor People's Campaign, and Michael Lynn Jr. Um, the city of Lansing retaliated against Mike Lynn. Um, I think that they did so with incredible speed. Um, the speed with which he was removed from his job was honestly astonishing to me based on how slowly the city seems to do so many other things. Uh, meanwhile, Brandon Betts used his position of power to harass and threaten a constituent. Hasn't issued a public apology. I know that he emailed you guys, but he has not apologized to his constituents. Um, he skipped out on the last two city council meetings and is still collecting a paycheck from our tax dollars. How do, how does that work? You know, uh, what's more, four cops committed murder in our city jail and they still have their jobs. How does that work? Mike Lynn gave out a phone number that lots of people in the city already have and he was fired so quickly. And yet, four men can murder someone and still have their jobs? It's absolutely unacceptable that the murderers of Anthony Hulan continue to work in a position of power, under the authority of the city of Lansing, gathering paychecks from taxpayer dollars while facing no accountability whatsoever. As someone who knows the deep pain and sorrow of losing a close family member, my heart absolutely goes out to the Hulan family and everyone who knew and loved Anthony. He didn't deserve to be murdered and his family deserves justice. We're not safe in this city if we can be murdered by the police with impunity. Being arrested is, should not be a death sentence. There is no reason why anyone should be arrested and then lose their lives at the hands of the police. The police are not executioners. Committing crimes is not an excuse for someone to lose their life. Being arrested is not an excuse for someone to lose their life. And it's absolutely unconscionable that four murderers still have their jobs. I'm done.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Luna, followed by Sam Clown.
Uh, hello, uh, this is my first time really speaking at one of these. Uh, I kind of came here to mostly echo what's being said about Anthony Holland, Michael Lynn, what happened at Baker Street, uh, and other events similar that have been happening around this city. But, uh, enough has really already been said on that. Well, not enough, but you've already heard it a dozen times tonight, so I'd want to address a couple other issues that I've seen around the city. Uh, number one is I really don't see what the city is doing to really, truly address mental health problems and disabilities in the city. Uh, as an LGBT person with mental illness, uh, honestly, like walking around the cities at night, I walk around at 2:00 AM on the south side because I'm on the autism spectrum and less stimulation helps me be able to walk around late at night. The only time I feel afraid at 2:00 AM walking around the south side is when I see a police car pull up. And I, I damn well recognize my white privilege when I don't get pulled over. But I'm still waiting for that day that I get harassed for walking around the south side at 2:00 AM. Um, uh, and I'm just thankful it hasn't happened yet. Uh, another issue that has, is very prevalent in the city that needs to be addressed is all the slum lords in the city. Uh, particularly Gardo Management, but there's plenty more, uh, that are doing horrible things in the city and driving up rent, not fixing their units, uh, and getting red tagged and the, the tenants are often who pays the price, but they're so backed up in lawsuits in the court sometimes that people who have cases against some of these landlords never get to see their day in court or it costs them too much to continue with their cases. And there's nothing being done to these landlords often. And something needs to be done. And the last thing I'd like to address is the Back Forty. I felt the entire city, uh, came after us for trying to defend the Back Forty citing health, uh, health and sanitation issues while refusing to address any of those issues. It was the people who paid for the dumpsters and cleaned up that entire camp. And it was the people who provided a porta potty to the people camping back there so that they have a place to use the restroom. So we addressed the issues that you guys kept citing about health and sanitation. And you guys pride, and Andy Shore practically gloated when someone died of a suspected drug overdose in the Back Forty, rather than treating it with sympathy and actually trying to understand why they're there instead of in a shelter. There are a lot of reasons people do not stay in a shelter and that is not an option for everyone. And we need to actually get these people sheltered. Thank you.
And our final speaker is Sam Clown.
Good evening, uh, again. Um, I would first like to say that, you know, it's been, uh, like Carol Wood said earlier, uh, about a year since America has faced, you know, like distancing restrictions. Uh, and it's kind of, it's kind of absurd that we're still doing the exact same thing, uh, where you have a hundred and eighty seconds. There's so little you can do with a hundred and eighty seconds. I can barely tune a guitar in a hundred and eighty seconds. And, and there are so many important things, uh, that, that you're forcing, you know, citizens in Lansing to pick, you know, which, which people deserve representation to you as the government and, and which issues have to wait for the next hundred and eighty seconds. Uh, I'm sure that if you guys decided to be creative to any degree, you could find some sort of suspension of the rules that allowed broader participation, um, that allowed some sort of Google sign up, you know, for people to sign up the day of, um, but you just don't want to do it. And I get it because, you know, it's, it's hard. You're spending a lot of time here. Some of you like actively look bored, uh, and I get it, you know, like you're sitting here. You, you get itchy, you want to stretch, you're thirsty. Um, and, you know, all of us are kind of bored saying the same things. Uh, and, and, you know, even more than that, there are people that are absolutely mortified uh, by the things that are going on, by the things that people in this room are guilty of or complicit in or culpable of. Um, so, uh, the first thing is just, just work on that. I mean, uh, the, the other issue is, um, there's this really poetic, um, horrendously poetic, uh, parallel to be drawn uh, between Michael Lynn and Brendan Betts, uh, in the leaking of phone number. You know, during the BLM protest last summer, uh, Brendan Betts was standing, you know, uh, in, in Moore's River and, you know, publicly gave out, uh, Mayor Shore's phone number. I know because I still have it and it ends in the number six. Um, but, you know, he faced no retribution for that, right? Uh, so the issue is not one of the action itself. The issue is one of, uh, who did the action, right? And, and the context around it, right? Uh, because, because again, Brendan gave out Mayor Shore's number to a group of probably over a hundred people and it was used every day for a couple of weeks there. Uh, and, and you guys didn't censure him for that. There was nothing done there. Uh, but, but the fact that Michael Lynn did it with the number that I had before the fact, that a lot of you had before the fact, that, you know, was very publicly accessible, um, and the fact that that leads into termination, uh, that leads into all sorts of, of, you know, questions about ethics and whistleblowing and retribution protections, you know? How, how are people in Lansing going to feel when they feel compelled to do the right thing? When the precedent is like, oh, you are going to lose your job. You are going to, you know, have to worry about how am I going to change my life up, pay my bills, pay my rent, take care of my family, right? Uh, it, it's, it's ridiculous, honestly. Um, you, you have a decision. There is still more people on council that I tolerate than people that I don't. And you can be proactive about morality and justice now, or, you know, by the time you feel personally a stake in it, it'll be too late and you won't have help.
Thank you. And that was our final speaker.
All right. See no further business for the Lansing City Council at nine fifty-three. The council is adjourned.